Meeting to order. Mr. Warner has the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As for a motion to approve the minutes of July 18th... Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. I'm gonna get out of here.
President.
Mr. Dees.
Here.
Mrs. Farar.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Alright, now we'll go for approval of the minutes of July 18th.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
I have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Alright, thank you. We'll note that.
Have I noted?
Ms. Zerinsky.
You're noted.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Alright, now what we're gonna do is a presentation of a proclamation. Ms. Zerinsky, would you like to take center stage and do your thing?
So Sam, come on up.
Thought he would've ran off.
So, um, in case y'all don't know, Sam, how do you s-
Benjigib.
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 So close. So, he's running 3,000 miles across the United States-
Wow.
-to raise awareness about marine plastic pollution. And yesterday, you came in and at his 100th mile, came into Lehigh University in Bethlehem, and he allowed me to run with him. Three miles, right?
Three miles.
We did it. So, because we already passed a resolution here, and we are, I'm trying to raise awareness, I wanna help him raise awareness too, and to give him the certificate of recognition for your achievement and your pending achievement. So, um, this certificate of recognition is presented in honor of Sam Benjigib's environmental stewardship. Whereas, Sam Benjigib, co-founder of Make a Change World, a graduate of Lehigh University, will be the first person in history to run 13 states within the United States, ocean to ocean, in recycled sneakers, on a zero-waste journey- at the pace of 20 miles a day, six days a week, to raise awareness about the 8 million metric tons of marine plastic waste, 80% of which originates inland. And whereas, Sam Benjigib, co-founder of Make a Change World, finished his first 100 miles at the center square of Lehigh University campus, and has established himself as a partner in raising awareness about single-use plastic within the city of Bethlehem and the county of Northampton. And whereas, Sam Benjigib, co-founder of Make a Change World, is committed to engaging communities about the severity of the global threat of marine plastic pollution that poses a serious threat to human health, and by implementing the Parley-Air Strategy. Avoid plastic wherever possible, intercept plastic waste, and redesign materials. And now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby recognize Sam Benjigib, co-founder of Make a Change World, for his environmental advocacy and stewardship, reaching 100 miles of his journey across the United States within Bethlehem, PA, recognizing that all Northampton County citizens can follow his example, and showing that anyone can make a difference if they take the first step, thereby bettering our community, beautifying Northampton County, and contributing to the mitigation of global climate change. And this is presented on behalf of all of us, Northampton County Council members, on this day, the 1st of August.
Thank you very much. It's an absolute honor to be here, and by running through 90 or so cities here in the United States and 13 US states, it's an honor for this to be the first official city and official county that I'm running through. So I thank you for, for, for all the efforts that you're doing when it comes to reducing single-use plastics and the environment. Um, it is an extremely serious issue. My brother Gary and I grew up in Indonesia, and it is an absolutely beautiful paradise, but unfortunately, you walk on the beaches and all you see is plastic trash. Um, so by running 3,000 miles, yes, it is an absolutely crazy feat, but it's also an amazing way of getting people's attention and showing that we need to act today, and that there is no better time to act than now, because we are really in a state of emergency. By 2048, there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish by weight. Um, so again, I thank you for, for this and for this honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Uh, now, we're going to have courtesy of the floor. So far, I have, uh, two individuals have signed up. You have five minutes, and you come up if you please state your name for the clerk. Teresa O'Brien.
I guess I don't need to say my name again, but I'll give you my address.
I'd just like you to state it for the clerk.
Alright, okay. My name's Teresa O'Brien, and I live on Vermont Drive.
Sometimes I actually screw up pronunciation, as hard as that may sound.
I'm commenting on the PennEast Pipeline that's proposed to run within half a mile of my house. I think I'm in, um, your area. The FERC blanket authorization of the PennEast Pipeline project was based on FERC's opinion as a national regulator that benefits to consumers in New York and New Jersey would outweigh damages to Pennsylvania residents' properties and quality of life. And FERC has not yet approved the current route. Pennsylvania DEP has not yet approved the project in its currently proposed form, and is waiting for PennEast to correct more than 300 deficiencies in its application. Every pipeline approved by DEP in the past five years has repeatedly violated Pennsylvania law. DEP halted Mariner East 2 after more than $12 million in fines, and Revolution after an explosion in Beaver County. And two days ago, I spoke with DEP Project Manager Mike Luciani, who's in charge of reviewing PennEast's application, and he told me, "Do I expect violations to happen? I hope not." We're trying to avoid that kinda thing, landslides, anymore, and reviewing pipelines is a learn-as-we-go type of thing. Um, he told me that he had worked on approving Atlantic Sunrise, and he thought it went really well. The violations on Atlantic Sunrise include diesel fuel releases into soil, drilling fluid releases into soil, and unauthorized use of horizontal directional drilling. Pipeline infrastructure projects are an emerging area of regulation in Pennsylvania. What Northampton County does now will set precedence for future projects. Northampton County Conservation District is responsible for reviewing erosion and sediment control permit applications from pipeline operators. I spoke with Nick DiPaolo, who told me that the county has completed its first technical review of the application that PennEast submitted in December 2018. PennEast has until Labor Day to submit a revised application with corrections to the deficiencies noted by the county. This pipeline's presence in our county is not a done deal. We still have a chance to stop it, to stop the decrease in our home values and disruption of local business during construction, not just try to bargain with PennEast for a payout. Stand up for the residents of this county. I respectfully urge you, pursuant to Pennsylvania Act 167, pass a Lehigh River Stormwater Ordinance that forbids drilling or excavation other than routine road maintenance within any HUC-12 watershed contiguous with the Lehigh River, within 100 feet of storm sewers, and within 100 feet of any BMP area in a municipal pollutant reduction plan already submitted to DEP. This pipeline will bring no benefits to Northampton County, but it will bring hazards, risks, and costs. This county council should use every available means to oppose it. There's no reason to let a private company make Car- uh, Northampton County into Carbon County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, uh, oh, that's okay. No, go ahead. That's okay. Uh, the next person I have is Joseph O'Brien. And, uh, same, five minutes, if you would say your name.
Good evenings. I'm Joseph O'Brien from, uh, 5220 Vermont Drive in Easton, Pennsylvania. So I just wanted to underscore a few points that Teresa just made. You know, first, you know, this PennEast Pipeline is one that delivers no benefits to any of the residents of Northampton County. It literally enters at one point, traverses it, and exits another. Now, of course, you know, there are going to be municipalities, and even individuals, who will receive some sort of compensation from the company to be able to have the rights or agreements along the way to be able to run the pipeline. But I think, you know, as we all know, you know, that money will soon be spent. It will be long gone, and what will be left behind, of course, will be the pipeline itself. A pipeline that's going to be with us in our community for decades. And we also know all too well from the history of pipelines that, you know, we don't need something as dramatic as an explosion to know that particularly with freeze thaw and just, you know, the difficulties of joining pipe, that there can be all sorts of, of releases of toxic substances, you know, into our environment, but perhaps even maybe even more important, I mean, into our neighborhoods, our communities themselves. Because if you look at where the pipeline actually is right now designed to go through, you know, we're actually gonna see that many residents of Northampton County will be able to see it out their front window, in through their backyards. And this is something that we really do need to take into consideration here, because we have the choice to be able to actually, you know, maybe not stop, but potentially ensure that really all the regulations are being completely complied with, and at the same time, really, that our community is, is protected. You know, and the one thing that I think is very important to keep in mind here, you know, if we thought that this pipeline, you know, was in fact somehow neutral, then maybe there'd be an argument for saying that, you know, okay, as long as there's basic compliance, it's okay. But there is no benefit here. In a world where there's no benefit, there can actually only be things that are deleterious to our society, to our communities. And it's because of that, that this council needs to take advantage of some of the, you know, of, of the approaches that Teresa O'Brien just highlighted for you, that are actually within your power. And one of the other important considerations here is that because it is new in a way for pipelines to be running through counties with the population density of Northampton County, that there's in fact an opportunity for this council to create precedents that will in fact guide policy across this state. So again, I really, I implore you all to please look at this issue very carefully, and recognize the power that you have to in fact make Northampton, to protect the citizens of Northampton County as this pipeline is considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
The, um, in the handout, it references, um, uh, Lehigh River Stormwater Ordinance. Is there an existing ordinance, or do you have a sample that's available?
You passed one in 2017 protecting the Monaxi watershed. So that was under Act 167. And when I looked on the county website, there's just the, um, the, your vote on, yes, we pass it. It might not have been to all of you individuals, but, um, but it did.
I'm gonna ask.
There are county websites.
Could, could you come up to the podium if there's gonna be involved?
In 2017, this council passed a, a Stormwater Ordinance for the Monaxi watershed, so under Act 167. So you probably have that on file, like, the pieces that you went through to do it.
Okay, so you're not, I, I'm reading this, is that you would like us to pass that? Now-
For, for a different region. So, Monaxi, um, over by Elix Mill Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's a different region, right? So I'm saying, uh, there's one page in here that has, um, HUC watersheds outlined in like pale blue, and I printed that from a, a federal website. So, I didn't have a lot of choice on the formatting. HUC 12 watersheds of Lehigh River. So, you see, there's, uh, there are two lines that go across Route 33.
Yep.
The lower one, that one, everything below it is the HUC watershed that's contiguous with the river. And so I'm saying pass it for that.
Okay.
And, you know, there's probably another one east of it in Easton, but like, right now, the pipeline's supposed to come right through there.
Okay, so what you believe is that we do not have one, and that that would help your cause?
It may not clarify all the things you would think you would have to forbid, because when it was developed, um, any pipeline that's currently underground there was put in when I was a very small child or before I was born. So, it probably covers other stuff, like, uh, lawn spraying. You know what I mean? Like, only so many releases of lawn spray, or if you're spraying a park.
Yeah.
It might not mention excavating and drilling. I couldn't find one that did, but that doesn't mean it doesn't. But also, uh, the, um, the BMP areas, Bethlehem Township has committed to, um, reducing by 10% the sedimentation runoff in a bunch of different areas that are on one of the handouts they gave you, but BMP 10 and, um, B10 and B11 are both in Southmont Plaza. And right now, um, where the pipe is supposed to go through, like, the overflow will, it looks almost like it would go directly into B10. Which also, the people at Southmont, the business owners, don't, I think a lot of them still think the pipe is going through where St. Luke's is. Yeah, which is another thing. So like, the rock wall they're gonna build, all of that's gonna be right next to an area where the, the township has already committed to reducing, uh, sediment runoff by 10%, which is gonna, it's hard to imagine they could reduce it while there's gonna be more.
Okay, so I guess my question might be for our solicitor or for our clerk. Uh, could we get a sample ordinance and, and look into whether this is something that council could potentially pass? Cause we have, as you mentioned, we have done-
Right, right, the Monaxi one from, from 20, I think it was introduced in December 2017, and I wanna say it was approved in January 2018, to go into effect by February.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Well, she'll get a copy.
Okay. So we'll look into whether or not we can pass that ordinance?
And, and also, I mean, you might just direct the county conservation district to really take it seriously, because I have to say, the DEP guy was very sympathetic when he found out where I lived. He was like, "Oh, oh." Whereas the county conservation guy was very cagey with me, like, "Oh, I don't know. I don't know when the deadline is. I don't know." It would be really nice to, um, yeah, like, maybe let them know, kind of what we view their job to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, I have no one else that's signed in. Is there anyone who would like to address council? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the county executive report. Do you have a report, Ms. McClure?
I do, an extensive one. But, um, Mr. Heckman, in, you know, my never-ending quest to make sure I am as responsive to council and the president in particular as possible, and our continuing understanding that Northampton County has gone canine crazy, you instructed me to bring Danny to county council tonight, and so, uh, just as a warning, Danny is our narcotics investigator, and, uh-
So if anyone wants to leave the room now?
Excuse themselves as a point of personal privilege before Danny comes in.
I could think of a couple.
Too late.
Do your job, Danny. Check out the guy in the red shirt.
Good evening. I am Lieutenant Ryan Heinrich. I've been with the Department of Corrections for going on 12 years. And this is our canine, Danny.
Sounds like Danny around.
So Danny came at three and a half years old.
Yeah.
She is now four by the time that we've been in the department. She is trained narcotics work and also patrol work. So she has six confirmed fines.
Wow.
She's been cited. Which have led to three criminal prosecutions. She is also booked in prison. We are in the process of getting her trained in more things. One of those things being medications, because as we all know, smuggling into jail is illegal. So that's what we are working on now.
Has it, has it been successful so far? You've, she's, you've found some issues that she's good?
Absolutely.
Great. What, what breed is she again? I know you were told it.
She's Belgian Maltese.
Yeah.
I don't know if I say-
Hey Danny, I'm clean.
But that's Belgian Maltese.
Belgian Maltese?
Maltese.
Really nice. Thank you very much, and thank you for the, what your job and what you're doing. When you leave, if you could walk her by Mr. Barron, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Executive. That was very, good to see him. Good to see the dog.
I don't have any other canines for you, Mr. Heckman, although the, the, oh, we do have Mr. Peabody, but he's not ours, right? Mr. Peabody's a loner, so I'm not bringing him here.
Okay.
Council, you-
I think that's a, somebody, that's a ther- isn't that the therapy dog? Is that the, they wondered who Mr. Peabody was. Isn't that the therapy dog?
Yeah, if we had more time, I would've had Julie tell you. Julie Bader is the one who, um, got that up and running. And we have four therapy dogs. Mr. Peabody is one of them. And they come, now they come for the summer every other, no, every Monday. There's about a, uh, I think it's about a three-hour window. So there's two dogs that come for the first hour and a half, and two different dogs that come for the second hour and a half, and we bring them during our busiest, um, visit time. And so in the, in the fall, it'll probably go back to, to Thursdays. So, um, it's been phenomenal. Not only do the kids love them, but, uh, on Thursdays, we were giving out our farmer's market vouchers to seniors, who were just eating the dogs up, and probably even more than anybody, the staff. Are, are, they all come down and, uh, sort of take their five-minute turn at, uh, at pet therapy. So, um, it's, it's, it's really been, been really great, so, yes.
I think it's a great idea. Maybe bring it here some night, I don't know.
Yeah. More dogs for you.
We could use a therapy dog on occasion, I think. Thank you.
Told you, we're, we have gone to the dogs.
Yeah.
Council, you are, you are getting a lot of work done. Um, congratulations, both big and small. Big and small projects. You, you obviously, um, tonight will be considering several contracts for the forensic center, and I'm hoping within nine or 10 months, we'll actually be there cutting a ribbon, and that'll be fantastic. That's a big thing you're doing. Some small things, you fixed the roof over the, uh, new, uh, part of the government center where the new courtrooms are. So, let's hope that doesn't leak. Um, you did that, and good job. Currently, you may have seen the fencing around Melitus. Melitus is being demolished. And, um, hopefully, before the, uh, the bad winter comes, we'll have a new parking lot there. You are getting things done, council. Um, it's, um, quite a testament to, to you. You received a big grant from the Commonwealth of $250,000. And we don't often, um, we don't often recognize our, our legislators and our state representatives and senators who, who assist us, Senator Scapello, Representative Freeman, all these folks who, who help us out at the county level. But in this particular grant, it was Senator Bascola who was so, uh, so instrumental in helping us get the $250,000 Fair Housing Grant. And I specifically wanted to thank Senator Bascola tonight. And here's what we're going to be able to do with that grant. The Northampton Community College Energy Analysis Team will perform energy audits in two low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods, one in Easton and one in Bethlehem. In addition to training for NCC students, plans on energy conservation will be developed, as well as improvements to lower energy costs to small business owners. Students from the Career Technical Institute of Technology and Bethlehem Area Vocational Technical School will build obtainable housing units within their neighborhoods. So, "obtainable" is the new buzzword-
Right.
-in the community, right? So, instead of affordable, we're now calling it obtainable, but it's affordable, if you can obtain it, right? And finally, the development of a conservation plan that works with the historical commissions in Bethlehem and Easton to provide low-cost preservation assistance and training. The goal is to preserve older historic homes, ten in each community, that are owned by an underserved population. Training will be provided by the Heritage Home Program and the National Park Service. Local lending institutions may be able to provide some low-cost assistance. So, this is what you're doing, and, um, you're, you're to be, uh, you're to be commended for that. Finally, um, we received the arbitrator's award in the arbitration with the corrections officers. And I can tell you, your, your county executive and administration is very pleased with the arbitrator's decision. You'll recall that at the table, we offered a 4.5% raise in the first year, which was not just 4.5%, but it was a step increase, and then two and two in the subsequent years. And we also offered to immediately bring the corrections officers into, uh, our healthcare plan, which as you know is an improvement over what our employees previously had, a significant and substantial improvement. That our offer was rejected, and, and because they're corrections officers and they cannot strike, they are entitled to binding arbitration. And what we received was the binding arbitration award after an extensive hearing. And the, the top line here is, the, the arbitrator awarded 0.77% more in wages than we offered at the table. Point seven, so not even a full percentage point more in wages than we offered at the table. But, I'm really excited about this award in the wages, because the arbitrator did for us what we were not able to do at the table with any of our bargaining units. The lion's share of the raise goes to people, corrections officers and others who are covered, who are here 13 years and less. So, those folks are getting the lion's share of the raises. And unfortunately, for those folks who are 13 years and more, they're getting less than they would've gotten had they taken our offer. So, you know, for the whole unit, our offer at the table was actually more fair than what the arbitrator did. So I, I feel kinda bad about that, but I'm really excited about being able to have the money front-loaded for the younger folks, because that's one of the things we hear all the time, right? Well, we can't, we can't recruit and we can't retain because Lehigh pays more, whatever. So the, the arbitrator actually did something for us that we asked all the bargaining units to do. You know, front-load the money for the younger people. But, so anyway, that, that happened. The deal is actually going to cost us less, even though they got a little bit more in wages, because they're not going into our healthcare in 2019. So we will save the money from the HSA payment, and I have the actual, the actual difference here, if you'll bear with me for a moment while I find my... Under our offer at the table, which was rejected for arbitration, it would've cost us $827,326. The arbitrator's binding award is going to cost us $791,164. So, um, again, we're very pleased with the arbitrator's binding, and, um, we look forward to working with the COs moving forward into the future. Any questions about that? Council, you're about to get another $136,000 for farmland preservation. Another parcel has been sold in, in the Shrin Development, and, um, we've signed the Memorandum of Understanding to get that money, and you'll have that in the very near future, and we'll put that in the farmland preservation budget and preserve some more farms. I know, I'm, I'm fairly sure, I've never met the O'Briens before, but I, I'm fairly certain that they understand, but the public may not, that we don't control the Conservation District. We have, they're independent, at least, um, at least somewhat independent from, uh, from the county. It, it isn't as if I can order them to do anything. I cannot. We, we have some ability to affect them administratively, because we do provide some administrative services to the Conservation District, and council has the ability to, when they come forward with their budget, to jawbone Conservation District about, you know, whatever particular items of interest are on your mind at the time, but we can't make them do anything in that regard. So, uh, that's something that public needs to know. We're not in, in total control of the Conservation District, and we're, we're certainly not in a position to influence their decisions, and nor, and actually nor should we be, in a, in a position to influence their decisions on the technical reviews that they make. I mean, I'm, I'm not qualified to tell them what story, you know, what they should be doing with runoff and, and things of that nature. So, um, it's important for the public to be aware of that. And that, sir, is all I have.
Thank you. Anything? Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Executive. Before we get into the old business, I just wanna make a statement that, uh, our solicitor, Mr. Spadoni, has to leave at 7:59 for a personal matter. I'm sorry. I, I apologize. My five, my two look like a five. 7:29 promptly. So, when he gets up and leaves, if you wanna take it by, do what you wanna do.
Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Alright, first order of old business. Public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Approximately 1.4 Acres, More or Less, as Determined by Survey of Real Property by the County of Northampton in Plainfield Township, Pennsylvania, from Norfolk Southern Railway Company." Uh, this was introduced by Ms. Zerinsky and Mr. Warner at our July 18th meeting. Are there any questions from the public on this? Anyone want to comment? Seeing none, council discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mrs. Farar.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Dees.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business? I don't have any on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go to new business. Consideration of Personnel Request Resolution, County Council, Deputy Clerk, Mr. McGee, would you please introduce your resolution?
It is hereby, it's hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical specialist, pay grade CS-17-2B, salary $37,955 in the office of county council, be eliminated effective August 1st, 2019. It is hereby further resolved by Northam- Northampton County Council that one full-time position of- of deputy clerk to council, pay grade of CE-11A, salary of $45,723, be created in the office of County Council effective August 1, 2019. So moved.
Thank you. All right. Discussion. Mr. Werner.
With all due respect to Mr. McGee, I've been fortunate enough for eight years plus to observe the county clerks and workers in our council office for numerous things, okay? And over those years, they've researched and responded well, when required. And that being said, the council awful is always, works as a team. The council staff works as a team back there. They've always helped each other, they've reached out to help, and they've been good in communications. The environment itself has led to a group of dedicated office personnel that are not concerned about titles or competition. They do their job and they do it well. The situation could change rapidly. If we introduce a new job description and the people feel uncomfortable or even worried about their positions, that makes an awkward situation in that office. Right now, there isn't any delineation between what goes on and what doesn't. They all work together. So the existing staff, I feel, for the past eight years, has done a great job, the ones that were there. Mr. McGee has a good point that he wanted to bring out after his first year. But I will tell you that, as far as I'm concerned, the fact that you're talking about legacy training and you bring up an idea that may be new and may be threatening in some ways to the people that are there, could cause just the opposite. Could cause people to want to leave, could cause people to say, "I need to retire early, I'm afraid." And the other point is that it's a position that, if someone does take a position with this county and they meet the requirements, there's still no guarantee that after three or four years, they wouldn't be ousted by a new incoming administration. So I'm, with all due respect to Mr. McGee, I'm going to be opposed to this resolution.
Mr. Deeks.
Basically, just like to, basically completely agree with Mr. Werner on it. I mean, you know, I've not been here for eight years, I'm coming on for, but I've never had any issue from any of them, you know, getting any research done, getting data that I needed. And, you know, the justification, even on the bottom here, prepare for succession, as Mr. Werner said, there is no succession, just because, you know, points them to that position, it's, you know, on the courtesy of the next council on who they want in there. And I think that the fear that we could have, you know, Linda not be able to be here and ask someone else to step in for it, while granted, the first couple of meetings or whatever, you know, may not be perfect, it's the same thing when you have a council change in here, you know, and fortunately, there's veterans around to help guide them through and go through it. So I don't see, you know, the urgency, I think it's, you know, creating a problem that's not there. So I will not be supporting it.
Anybody else have anything they want to say? Ms. Ferraro.
I'm just very torn with this. I understand the legacy idea, but I've been here through a lot of changes. And I remember when I first came, we had Frank and Renee. But anyway, these job description or the, oh, the education part really bothers me because I like the bachelor's degree. I'm not sure anybody with a bachelor's degree is going to be real excited about coming in for $45,000. But poly-sci, you know, I just don't feel that poly-sci is the kind of job we need here. We need someone if we do changes. Our job is the budget, money, budgeting, accounting, looking at the budget that Mr. McClure gives us, tearing it apart, having somebody to tear it apart and find it out where his wiggle room is that we can get rid of. So, but seriously, I just don't feel, I remember when Frank had his stroke and Linda took over so nicely, and things do seem to work out. I just don't think we have to really upset the status quo and come in with job titles and so forth.
Ms. Zirinsky.
I just think it's worth clarifying that that's an "or" statement, public administration, political science, or closely related field. It's not saying that they have to have that, it's just a suggestion in the job description. I would hope that a new person in a role with a different title wouldn't threaten other people's position in the office. I would hope that the people in the office would be open to having a new role and that this is a pay increase from the current status here. I don't think that anybody's necessarily upset with what's happened in the office or thinks that it's not adequate, but that this clarification of the role brings more definition to the position so that there is a legacy. And I think that there is something to be said about that, because I think in other offices within the county, we've talked about how there's only one person in that position, and that's the only person who can do that job, and there's no one who can ever take that over. I think it's important to have a bit of transition, and I don't think we should be threatened by change, but we should embrace it and understand that some things moving forward will change, even if it does change with another council. You said you've been through changes already. So I don't think we should feel threatened by change. We have to have a new person in the office. Genesia is still temporary. So I think this might be a good chance for us to make this change now, and so I'm going to vote in favor with Bill. Mr. McGee?
But how many chiefs do we need? You know what I mean?
I don't think this is a chief.
Well, titles. Why do we need titles?
For pay grades?
The world we live in.
Yeah, for pay grades.
Any other comments? Mr. McGee, is there anything you want to say?
I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that all right?
No, go ahead.
I have a question. And I, my only question was that if we eliminate the position this evening, obviously, there's nobody that's going to take over tomorrow, and that it would have to be a hiring process. So are we still able and eligible for the temporary position to cover while we're in the process of hiring? I don't know who to ask that question to.
Well, it's a fair question in the sense that I think we have a manpower person who's doing that job. Can the manpower person still be employed if the position itself does not exist? Mr. Solicitor.
Well, that's a good question.
Frankly, but my opinion off, hire of a temporary basis?
Yes.
Actually, within council's budget?
The answer is yes, you can.
She can stay.
That's what I thought. Well, I just wanted our solicitor to weigh in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd just like to comment on a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Of course, it's my resolution, and I owe everyone a chance to justify or the position. And I've, it's not, I didn't rush this through. I've thought about it carefully. I've talked to most of the people on council. I've left my door open and my phone open for anybody to get ahold of me and let me know their concerns. To Mr. Werner's point, in no way in this resolution does it say that council clerk or the staff is doing a bad job. They're not, I don't have a problem with what they're doing. They take care of, when I need them, they're there. Again, you know, it's a planning, it's succession. I sat in council before I was elected, and I heard it many times then, you know, all the horror stories about a legacy issue in all the different departments. And then when I was on council, I heard it again, from people sitting at this diocese. So, you know, I've been in the personnel field. I was in the personnel field in the Navy. I'm in the personnel field now at my other job, and I know how it works. And, you know, I've been accused of being a new guy with a new idea. You know, apparently, nobody else has an idea, and we should just go with, you know, the flow and see how it goes, and cross our fingers, and hopefully, you know. And that's fine, but, you know, in the military, I learned, you know, there's six Ps in the military that I learned, and I can only discuss five of them on the diocese. Five, and it prevents poor performance. And, you know, I just, I believe in this. I think it's important. I know how important their job is, the clerk, and somebody to take over if something happens to Linda, like to do what she's doing exactly now, and to be here at the meetings and understand how the microphone gets set up and how all the, everything, everything, and what happens when a problem happens. Everybody looks at Linda, you know, "Oh, what's up?" You know, the president relies on council, Ms. Zembo. So I know how important it is. And, you know, and I don't know if this got political or not, I hope not. I was hoping for full council vote. But, you know, I'm still, I still want to get this resolution passed, and I hope he's considered supporting it. That's all I have.
Mr. Kuzic.
In that light, one quick question then. If this were to pass, what would be the process to fill the position? How would you go about recruiting and finding someone that meets the qualifications that you would hire?
My belief, if I can, I've talked, you asked me about this, so if you, should I explain?
Yeah, there's a resume, and personnel has, you know, created it, but go ahead, please weigh in.
My feeling would be this, the charter specifies two positions, clerk of council, solicitor. Other than that, it's up to council. I mean, if it's not up to us, I don't know who it's up to, to decide what other staff you want, how you want to hire them, and whatever. There's no procedure we have to follow. He doesn't have to follow a procedure for his directors, other than having them come in front of us. So, I mean, my thought was, the president, the vice president, chairman of personnel, and Ms. Zembo would be a group that would sit and interview people that came in. Unless council has a suggestion, I'm willing to listen to any suggestion, that would be what I would consider a reasonable way to go about this. So you're going to have someone who's been doing this job and is our clerk of council. I think it would be a mistake not to have her sit in. And you have the chairman of personnel, it happens to be Mr. McGee, vice president of council, president of council. That was, that was my take on how the procedure would be for hiring, or interviewing, at the very least. And at that point, then, we might even have a situation where we want to bring the name before council, you know, do you agree or not agree to hire? I mean, I don't want to make more of this than what it is.
We did go through this when Frank left.
Yeah.
We sent out, we had resumes, and we had at least 20 or more than 20 resumes came in, highly qualified and very interesting, and, you know, and Linda was here and had the experience, and also she won. And, but I don't like using the word "political," because any vote I take here, it's not political, believe me. I think we're elected, that DNR has to go away behind our names. We're working for the benefit of the county. And so this is not a political decision. This is a decision for the legacy, for the continuation of service that we absolutely need as part-time elected officials.
I think, maybe, and I don't want to speak for Mr. McGee, I think some of the concern was that he was hearing that maybe there was a job and somebody, somebody was sitting there waiting for it. I'm not aware of anybody that's sitting there waiting for it. And if I were, I'd pretty much probably already disqualify him in my mind. I don't, you know, who knows? You might get one applicant, you may get zero applicants, you may get 20 applicants. At this point, I have no idea. I mean, the things that have been mentioned are, yeah, there's no job security, really. I mean, there's no job security for the clerk and the solicitor, when you come right down to it. So, I mean, yeah, I agree with you, Ms. Ferraro. We've known each other a long time, and while we may have had times, you know, there's always political debates that go on, but I think in something as important as the functioning of the council office, I don't think anybody's, I would, I don't think, I mean, if people don't want to do it, you don't vote for it. If you think it's a good idea, you vote for it. It's like everything else we do. Are there any other discussion? Anybody have anything they want to say? I want to make a couple of comments, if I may. And the reason I'm making the comments is I listened to the committee meeting, and Mr. McGee, you know, he, I thought he took some flak, and, I mean, I think the thing is, our plan, when we talk about what is our council procedure and our plan, our plan and procedure was Frank Flissler for like 35 years. He started here when we started, as a Comerole charter. That was our plan. We had no plan. He had Renee Cole, who left, and honestly, I mean, I hate doing this because I always say, "History's a good thing to bring," but then you also bring your age. I interviewed Ms. Zembo as director of human services, and when Renee left, as an administrative assistant, he said, "Oh, now what am I going to do?" And I said, "Good, I interview this young woman." I said, "I think she'd really be great in that position." And he interviewed Linda, and he hired Linda. And, I mean, I think he did a good job. Now, what happened was, he had his stroke, and, you know, it was a bad time. I remember going to visit him. And fortunately, Linda had been here, she had been doing the job, and then she could step in. And then, once he was out of the hospital, she did, was able to confer with him if something came up that was really big. I've talked to Mr. Flissler about this myself. So, I mean, in that sense, I think we were very, very fortunate. The stars aligned. It was unfortunate what happened with Mr. Flissler. You never want to see something like that happen again to anybody. But, I mean, it is, we were fortunate, and that's the best I can say. I would say we were lucky in some ways. But the idea, though, that we have a system or a procedure, what system do we have? What procedure do we have? I mean, who hires, who's in charge of hiring? I guess, I would think council's in charge of hiring. Now, is if, if that's, does it come down to an issue of ego? Does it come down to a figure of who's in control? At any given time, it's just a fact, five members of council are in control. Is it the clerk of council, regardless who it is, that decides who gets hired and who doesn't? If you feel that way, maybe that should be put and memorialized in some type of written document. I would believe it's the five members of council that decide that. So, you know, it's, the, I just want to, if there's an alternative, Mr. McGee came on council, he observed from his background, he said, "You know what? I think this would be something we should look into, and we should consider legacy." He took into effect everything and to account everything that you've all said. Of course, a future council can get rid of this person. Of course, a future council can decide to tear this new design out and put a brand-new one in. A future council can do whatever they want to do. If there's five of them that want to do it, they could say, "We don't want an executive report anymore." I mean, you know, we don't need to hear from him unless we have a question. No offense, that's any executive. So I'm just saying, we control the operation. And I, to be very frank, I told this to Ms. Zembo from day one, when I first heard about this. I would not support any plan that involved her, or her leaving her job, or Sharon, for that matter, or any kind of paid change or anything like that. To me, this was an individual on council, as an elected official, he has every right to come up with an idea and say, "Hey, I think there's a hole in what we do. I don't think we have a system. I'd like to introduce this as a way to do things." It wasn't done to get into a war with anybody, it wasn't done to pound on your chest and say, "Who's in charge, who's not in charge?" I know who's in charge. Five members of council are in charge. And if you want to abdicate that to the clerk or anybody else, that's up to you. I refuse to abdicate that to anybody. Myself and four members of council decide what we do and when we do it. And if five people wanted to do something and I didn't like it, I had to live with it. Peg knows that. And we served on council, there are a lot of votes I didn't agree with. But once it's voted, it's done. Until the next group, you can get the five votes, then you throw it out. So I'm going to support it, because it's a plan. Maybe it's not going to be a great plan, with all due respect, Mr. McGee, but it's a plan. It's more of a plan than anybody else put forward. And frankly, to be honest, we didn't have a plan up until now. The plan was, "Let's throw some grass up in the air, see which way it blows, and hopefully it blows the right way." So I support it. This is not against anybody. This is not deferring or taking away power from anybody. I think this is, personally, I think it's been overblown. That's just my own opinion as an individual council member. So, Ms. Zirinsky.
I just want to say that I don't think it's a really great argument to say that no one else put anything forward and that this, so that we accept this. I think in itself that the resolution isn't necessarily bad, and that it does, it is a good argument. good argument and it does pose a good solution to a problem that Bill McGee observed. I think that no one should feel threatened by this and I think that the fact that Linda will have a chance to be in on who gets picked and who is chosen actually makes her a stakeholder in the legacy. So she can groom that person because I know, we love Linda, you know? She does a great job. There's no question of that. There's no question of that. But this does put into a kind of procedure, and I know that Bill's background is procedure, having that military background. Things are, and I like that. It gives an order in an organization and I don't think that's a bad thing to bring to council. And just because no one's come up with something better, I don't think that diminishes the value of what we have here.
No. I'm just saying, as of now, I don't think we have a plan. It's just been what's been sort of happening. Our plan for many, many years was one person.
Right.
And he left. That being said, we were fortunate. And let me be clear, from my perspective, whoever gets hired for this, Ms. Zembo's in charge of the office back there. I mean, I'm not, if she says, you know what, this person's whatever, I mean, I don't, we haven't had this problem, so I don't see how this is much different. If somebody comes in and they think that they're all this and that and she says there's a problem, I'm going to deal with it if I happen to be president. I mean, she's in control back there. She's the clerk of council and she's the boss. I don't, titles, I mean, call them the grand poobas of council. I don't really care what you call the person. At the end of the day, they answer to her and to council, just like she answers to council. So I still see a clear delineation. There's not going to be, in my mind, there's not going to be an argument back there going, oh, you can't tell me to do that or this or that. She's in control. She's in charge. So, I mean, that's my take.
May I babble on one more time?
Go right ahead.
Okay. I don't see Linda retiring anytime soon.
I haven't broached that with her.
Why are we putting a person in here for legacy? When Linda decides to retire in some years down the road sometime, we'll, that's when we'll send out the resumes. Linda will be here to train the person and we can, we can, that'll be our plan.
We don't have a procedure for legacy right now. This sets in order a procedure. It's not just the filling of the gap with a person. It's creating the procedure by which could be filled by someone today, tomorrow, years down the line. This doesn't say that Linda will necessarily be retiring anytime soon, but it sets in place a procedure if she would retire or down the line.
I'd like us to get off the thing of retirement or anything like that. That's a personnel issue.
But that's a tough thing to have to listen to. You know, she's sitting here.
We're getting into areas of age and other things that I, we're not going to go down.
Hey, I can talk age.
So can I.
I'm old, but.
But, no, I'm just saying.
I know.
If anybody has anything new to add, I mean, I save my two cents. If anybody has more two cents, I think we've talked this to death and unless we have something somebody wants to add to this, I say we call for the vote.
Call the question.
Call for the vote.
All right, Ms. Zembo.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. La.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
No.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
No.
Mr. Deeds.
No.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
No.
Passed by vote of five to four.
Okay. Now, second item on all business is consideration of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 to 2023 consolidated plan and fiscal year 2019 community development block grant annual action plan. Mr. McGee.
Now therefore be it resolved, drafts of the fiscal year 2019, 2023 five-year consolidated plan and fiscal year 2019 annual action plan were on public display from July 1st, 2019. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm one up. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Northampton that the fiscal year 2019 and 2023 consolidated plan and fiscal year 2019 annual action plan are hereby approved. Number two, that it is cognizant to the conditions that are imposed by, in the undertaking and carrying out of housing and community development activities with federal financial assistance and that the county executive is authorized to execute and file the financial assistance application with HUD, which is, has indicated its willingness to make available funds to carry out the CDBG program in the amount of $2,103,140, home program in the amount of $568,799, and it is further authorized to act as the authorized representative of the county of Northampton to sign any and all documents in regard to these programs. That the county executive is hereby authorized to provide assurance and/or certifications as required by HUD and also provide it, provide any additional documents that may be requested. So move.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. La.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next is consideration of a resolution approving the acceptance of a grant award from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Authority. Mr. McGee.
Now therefore be it resolved by the county of Northampton that the county executive is hereby authorized to accept the award of $250,000 and execute any agreements necessary. That the county executive is authorized to execute and file any financial assistance reporting requirements to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for the funding request and it is further authorized to, and is further authorized to act as the authorized representative for the county of Northampton to sign any and all documents in regards to this program. That the county executive is hereby authorized to provide assurance and/or certification as required by the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency and also provide any additional documents that may be requested. So move.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, we think it should be used to work on the Glendon Hotel. That's weird.
Well, ask Mr. Barron, he's sitting here. Be no further discussion, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have consideration of a resolution approving the submittal of an application for funding to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes. Mr. McGee, here we go.
Now therefore be it resolved by council of Northampton, council of county of Northampton that the county executive of the county of Northampton is hereby authorized to execute and file an application to the Office of Lead-Based Paint Hazard in Healthy Homes for $2 million. That it is cognizant to the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking and carrying out of lead-based paint hazard control with federal financial assistance. That the county executive is authorized to execute and file the financial assistance application with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes for the funding request. And it is further authorized to act as the authorized representative of the county of Northampton to sign any and all documents in regard to these programs. That the county executive is hereby authorized to provide assurance and/or certifications as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and also provide any additional document, documents that may be requested. So move.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
And Mr. La. Passed by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now we go to consideration of Article 13, contract resolutions. We have Sordoni Construction Services, General Construction Services, Wind Gap Electric, Electrical Construction Services, JBM Mechanical, HVAC, Myco Mechanical Plumbing and Fire Protection, Wind Gap Electric, Solar Construction Services, Wind Gap Electric Low Voltage Security Construction Services. And first one up is Sordoni Construction Services, General Construction Services. Mr. Warner.
Yes, this is from a special finance committee meeting we had and each one of these will be taken separate, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Okay. Whereas therefore be resolved, the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Sordoni Construction Services for General Construction Services for the new forensic center.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? As you said, we had a, Mr.
Just a quick point. For me, this, this vote, this has been a long journey. Maybe Mr. McClure or Mr. Durtenjer know that the first time I became aware of the need for this was in a budget hearing in 2006. So I will be enthusiastically casting yes votes for all of these and I look forward to the construction being on time and under budget.
Of course. That should just be the tagline for the whole thing.
I don't know if Mrs. Ferraro remembers, but I think Mr. Lysick's been, was dropping hints about this long before 2006.
I remember.
Complaining about the refrigerators in Gracel or the bodies, he didn't know what to do.
Hey, Joe Reichel was here before him.
All right. Now we're getting, now you're getting too deep into history. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. La.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next one is Wind Gap Electric. Mr. Warner.
For that construction service, now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Wind Gap Electric for electric construction services for the new forensic center. And that was moved forward.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next is JBM Mechanical. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with JBM Mechanical for HVAC for the new forensic center and that was moved forward with good discussion.
Very good. Is there any discussion further on that? Call for the vote.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. La.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. And Mr. Warner, we're going to go with gap.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, all these construction people were at our meeting. They were, they were in to talk with us, so I wanted that as a public record, okay?
Yes.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Myco Mechanical Incorporated for Plumbing, Fire, Protection Construction Services for the new forensic center. So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. La.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Passes by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now we're doing Wind Gap Electric, I think, solar construction.
Two more to go. Okay. This is for the solar construction services. Now therefore be it resolved, the Northampton County Council hereby concurs with the recommendation of the county executive set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Wind Gap Electric for solar construction services for the new forensic center. That was moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? I know Ms. Zirinsky wants to get the kilowatt costs.
She's going to get a question on the kilowatt cost.
Not, I know you're going to have it now, but sometimes you're going to give her, her answer down the road.
We have that answer now.
Oh.
That's awesome.
It may change your vote, I don't know if you're.
Where's the finished project moving? It's 115.5 kilowatts and the cost is $2,547 per.
That make you happy?
What'd you say?
The cost is $2,547 per kilowatt.
I think the math is wrong.
It can't be 2,500. It's probably like 250. 2,500 per kilowatt.
For construction, it's a 293,000 dollar contract. And there's 115.5 kilowatts.
Have a mathematician.
What's your math?
293,770.
Watts.
Kilowatts.
Okay. Not watts. Got it. Got it.
There's a mathematician.
Yes. Got it.
Yeah, he's pretty quiet.
You got it.
I was going to say, wait a second.
Got a mathematician there.
I defer to, I know we're not, I know we're tools not to jump in. I don't know.[1532.33] Are you okay with that now you're fine?
No, it's very good, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Are there any other discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Passed by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, last one, I believe, is Wind Gap Electric Low Voltage Security. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now therefore be resolved, the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive set forth, the attached documentation approving contract with Wind Gap Electric for Low Voltage Security Construction Services for the new forensic center. I'm very happy to say they did a great job, so.
I thought the entire meeting was good. The people, thank the people again for coming. It was very helpful. All right, any discussion? When you're spending that much money, they should show up, right?
They're under budget and on time.
Well, and you forgot something, Mr. Kuzic. No change orders.
No change orders.
All right. All right, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passed by vote of nine to zero.
Excellent. Are there any other new business? Seeing none. We'll go to council committee reports. Who wants to, don't all talk at once.
It's on first.
Hefner.
Go ahead.
Human Services just met before this meeting, had a presentation from Iris Department and discussed the referrals and how they process them, as well as a lengthy discussion of the children and youth referrals that they receive. Also had a guest from Bucks County, Mr. John Rubin, who is equivalent to Ms. Wandelowski's position here. And he discussed their process of transferring to a merit wage system from the.
Civil service.
Civil service system and how they did that process. So, it was very informative. It's something that I think we're going to continue in possibly the personnel meeting because there were some questions regarding the HR procedures that occurred. Altogether, good show.
Good job.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Well, I just wanted to report, the airport board, escalator number 11 has been repaired. And that's been a big thing at the airports, not having functional escalators. And so, the rest will be repaired or replaced over a period of time. And we discussed the new airport runway and hangar 11. So, there's a lot of development going on at the airport. It's a really exciting time. And our budget has been positive. There's new flights to Savannah and Tennessee. And the airport's just doing really well now. So, I just wanted to report that.
Hey, may I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman? That's Lehigh Valley Airport.
Yes.
How's Braden doing?
As far as I know, it's doing fine. I mean, I've talked to, her name I can't remember. But we have discussed several things with the rentals of the.